Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, April the 2nd, 2018. I would ask all present to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask the City Administrator to note the roll call. I believe Counselor Jacksaw was coming back, but I don't know. So this time, let the record show that she's not present. Oh, here we go.
I won't see that for eight minutes.
That will move to the agenda, and we have one addition to the agenda, and that's item number three under Old Business, to consider removing from the table the on-sale liquor license, temporary on-sale liquor license for the Bass Championship.
I would move the addition.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to approve the agenda with the addition.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the agenda. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion is carried. Agenda is approved with the addition. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the March 19 regular City Council meeting.
Move on to minutes.
Motion by Counselor Briggs to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. And hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried. Minutes are approved. And move to the resolution approving transfers and payment of claims and accounts payable. Your pleasure with that resolution. Motion by Counselor Pearson to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. I would like to bring to the council's attention one item, and that would be on the page 11 of the claims. And it's about two-thirds of the way down the page, and it's reserved for capital outlay. And there's a Nortrax Incorporated John Deere 710 backhoe. There are three places in the items below that that bring to a total what the $168,000, so the 58-9-65-15, the $67,388-75, and the $42,117-98 are all the purchase prices on that. Also on the agenda, under New Business, under 3E, is to approve the adjusted purchase price of that $168,000 because the backhoe that we were intending to trade in had a loss of transmission, and so the value that we had believed that we were going to get was reduced significantly. And so the figure that is in the resolution includes the deduction and includes the $8,500 that we will get for the trade-in value.
It's not enough in the claims, it needs to be higher.
No, the claims are correct. It reflects the same. I just want to bring it to your attention because it'll be coming up later, and it's already in the claims here, so. Further discussion with regard to the resolution on the transfers and payment of claims?
Mr. Mayor, clarification then. If, I mean, this is procedural, and it doesn't mean that much, but how can we approve the claims if we haven't yet approved the changes? I mean, I, you tell me there's a way to do it, and I'm fine.
The only thing that we're, we're approving the purchase price of $168,000 for the backhoe because of the, and the only thing we would be doing under 3E is the adjustment in the trade-in value loss. That would be my understanding of the, of the question before us. Administrator or city attorney, do you have any other opinions?
Just to, again, clarify, the original trade-in value was $12,000. Because there was a transmission failure between the time that we ordered the new equipment and the time that the backhoe, the trade-in value was reduced from $12,000 down to $3,500. So the net loss was $8,500. Council had already approved the price, assuming a $12,000 trade-in value. Under New Business, just indicate the value of the 710L backhoe at Trax, which is $168,000.
$8,500 more.
That's correct.
That's fine. And my, and it's a procedural question, I would vote in favor of that one. I just didn't know if you could vote for the claims without voting for that first, is my question, but.
Well, and I think, again, we're, the only thing we're, we're approving the adjusted price by the $8,500 loss. That's the only thing we're doing in the, in 3E. That's my opinion, but that's.
I would agree.
Okay.
Okay, further discussion with regard to the resolution or the payment of claims or transfers? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried. Resolution is adopted, approving the transfers and the payment of claims and accounts payable. Thank you. Move to the audience, is there anyone in the audience that brings, wants to bring something to the attention of the council at this time? Not, there'd be opportunity at the end of the meeting for that to also occur. Thank you. We'll move to Old Business, and item number one under Old Business is to approve the second and final reading of the contract ordinance, number 964, approving the lowest responsible bid for the 9th Avenue Street reconstruction from 11th Street to 17th Street. And that contract ordinance would go to the successful bidder of Bowman Asphalt Products in the amount of $766,335, and authorizes the signatures. Your pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that motion.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw, second by Counselor Pearson, to approve the second and final reading of that contract ordinance. Discussion on the motion or the contract ordinance. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried. The second and final reading is approved. Thank you. Item number two under Old Business is to approve the second and final reading of the contract ordinance, number 965, approving the lowest responsible bid for the Crescent Drive improvements, from Memorial Drive to the cul-de-sac. That successful bidder is Wagner Construction in the amount of $1,818,723.75, and authorizes the signatures.
I'll move that one too, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw to approve the second and final reading of that contract ordinance. Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion. I just want to note under that one that that also includes, and it's not noted here, three blocks of city streets that will be stabilized. And I know there's one 8th Avenue East, I think 4th Avenue, and 6th Avenue. There are three different blocks that are going to be stabilized as part of that contract. I just, I had a call on it from a citizen last week, wanted to know if, if we were going to be doing the stabilizing that they had asked for, and the answer is yes, and it's part of that contract. Further discussion. Question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion is carried. Second and final reading of contract ordinance, number 965, is approved. Item number three is the resolution on the Bass Championship for temporary on-sale liquor license that has been, was tabled at the last meeting.
I would make a motion to remove that from the table.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to remove from the table. Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the item to remove it from the table. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and the item is removed from the table, and it's now before us.
I would move for the approval of the resolution for the International Falls Bass Championship application for temporary liquor license.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Drowba to approve the resolution approving the temporary on-sale liquor license for the Bass Championship for August 23rd through the 25th.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion.
I just want to point out, the last meeting, I was the one who tabled this, and the reason for it was just so that we could get a good conversation between the Public Works and the Bass Championship, and that has occurred. So I'm very happy that they'll be having their liquor license and another successful Bass tournament.
That meeting did take place last week.
I believe so.
Between the Public Works and, and the Bass Championship persons? I'll vote yes, motion is carried. Consent agenda is approved. Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Move to New Business, and item number one is to authorize the signatures, the Minnesota Further discussion then with regard to the resolution approving that temporary liquor Department of Human Services, attestations for intergovernmental transfers and supplemental Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried. payments form. Resolution is adopted, and temporary liquor license is approved.
Who's prepared to discuss this?
Thank you. Move to the consent agenda, and there are three items under the consent agenda. I think the City Administrator is, but I guess I'd like to have a motion first if The 2018 city license for Mickey Ballinger doing business as O for Sweet Catering, that's an itinerant restaurant license. we're going to have discussion. Two, approve the travel and training expenses for council and supervisors to attend the League of Minnesota Cities 2018 Annual Conference, June 20th through the 22nd, in St. Cloud, Motion by Counselor Drowba to authorize the signatures to that form.
Second for discussion.
Minnesota. Second by Counselor Jacksaw for discussion. And item three is to approve the employee assistance agreement between the Sand Creek Administrator.
Mr. Mayor, the fire chief presented to the Administration Department.
Limited and the City of International Falls, effective March 15th, 2018, through March 14th, 2020, and authorizes the signatures.
See that the Human Services requires supplemental payments to the Medicaid system, as it was
Your pleasure with the consent agenda. Motion by Counselor Drowba to approve the consent agenda?
explained to me, means for the state to reimburse the city tax that required for providing
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson.
ambulance services, that's not reimbursed, I believe, through Medicaid.
Being no debate on the consent agenda, question?
Aye.
The tax money back?
Yes. That's how it was explained to the fire chief.
Further questions? For discussion with regard to the motion or the Department of Health Services, intergovernmental transfers and supplemental payments. Hearing none, the chair will then call the question on the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and signatures are authorized for that payment form. Thank you. Item number two under New Business, to approve the appointment of the 2018 camp host for City Beach. City Administrator.
Mr. Mayor, I received notification today, we did receive an application from Julia, and out in the material package, she submitted an application, who I was eager to take position in the backhoe, it served as a camp hoe, running at about 11 o'clock, and she indicated that they have decided to go another route, so they.
All right, there's nothing to approve at this time, since you don't have any appointments or applicants. We'll leave that with the administration to continue to advertise and see if we can secure camp hosts for City Beach for the summer. Thank you. Item number three, Consider Public Works and Infrastructure Committee Recommendations. The first is item A, and it's Greg and Karen Miles, and it would prorate the water and sewer charges for the month of February to $7.89 versus the minimum charge of $47.31. The Miles, Greg, and Karen came before the Public Works Committee, and they had purchased the house next to them, and were then asking the city water department to turn on the water, and they have been customers of the city in the house that they live in for 22 years. They questioned the payment of the $20 fee that we have for water and sewer, and then received their bill, and it was, they had only had the water on five days, and they used 300 gallons, and they questioned the charge that they would get a bill for $47.61 for 300 gallons and five days of having the water turned on. The committee thought that we should adjust that payment, and in figuring it out for five days, and the 300 gallons, committee is recommending that it be $7.94 versus the minimum charge of $47.61. That is a, before us, and as committee member.
I would move for those reimbursement charges.
Okay. Motion by Counselor, motion by Counselor Drowba to approve the prorating of the water and sewer charge for the Miles for the month of February to $7.89 versus $47.61, isn't it? Yep, 61. Second of the motion.
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion. Counselor Drowba.
Since, since we have the budget and finance, or I'm sorry, Public Works meeting, I was able to talk to Betty, and Betty had been working with Emma, and one of the concerns that I had at the Public Works meeting was, we don't have a policy or anything that, that explains to people as they get their water when their first meter reading is going to be. So you're getting that base rate whether you're on the first day of the cycle or the last day of the cycle before you go into the next one. I talked to, I spoke with Betty, and I believe Emma and Betty had been able to work out a way to prorate all of the bills moving forward, so that we aren't billing someone for the entire month. If you have one person moving out and someone moving in, one person can get prorated for 13 days, and the other person would get the last 15 days if you were working in the month of February. That doesn't change what this one does, and we don't have a policy that puts that in place, but just for fair and, and being someone who is a water payer myself, and we have concerns on how much our water is, we shouldn't be charging somebody on the second to last day of the month for an entire month's worth of water when they aren't using that service. So if we, if we have the ability to move forward in policy to switch it so everyone can be prorated, that makes a ton of sense to me, and I think that that should be something that this council looks for, looks forward to doing. But as for today, this particular incident, I, I think it makes sense to switch that, that dollar amount to a prorated fee.
My first inclination was to vote no on this, because of the extra bookwork, and in the scheme of things, your initial monthly charge, if you lived somewhere 20 years, is inconsequential to most people, I would say. This person's also running a business, this is a rental.
They haven't rented it yet, they haven't started, no, they, they just bought the place to clean it up.
And then I guess, I, I mean, you're, you're representing that this isn't a particularly burdensome process then to the accounting office?
I would, I would talk to Emma on that one.
It's not a terribly difficult problem.
I think to Counselor Drowba's point, we are moot on many of these questions that do come up in our policy, we don't really have a comprehensive policy, but, so you're telling me that this would not be a burden to the accounting office, it's already understaffed?
No, it wouldn't be, well, they need a matter of.
Okay.
So it basically comes down to, we would have to come up with a policy moving forward to make this be implemented, but it seems fair to all the people that utilize our system. And they would still have the original $20 fee for setup and hookup or deposit, I believe it is, and then that money goes back to the people when it goes out of, out of their names. So it's just a procedural issue, we would have to come up with a policy to move forward.
Now you raise a question, Mr. Mayor. Do you have a connection fee and a, and a disconnection fee that's still, may, is in there, over and above the deposit? All right. Okay.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think if that's the direction that the City Council wants to take, then it, rather than being a policy decision, it might be more appropriate what we do and do it as an ordinance. Part of the comments that I raised in my memo to the council was that the authorize that doesn't necessarily codify it in the ordinance versus a.
Think we should codify something like that?
Policy that we've had for at least 20 years is to, people based on the month that their service, we charge, having the service to the property, we're prorated it. So this would be a change, and. Allow to do that. So if they, if you do it as a policy, then we should, we should verify that the ordinance doesn't have any.
Oh, okay.
And verify that. Policy, and I think that there should be a policy in writing that's adopted for the council that we. On a sheet or a fact sheet that would go to anybody that said.
My concern.
administrative.
My concern is that the City Administrator is saying that, I think you're saying, we're jumping the gun on this, and we really aren't prepared to make a decision, we have nothing, we haven't done the research on the ordinance to really know that we're able to do this, and that you were saying that we should actually do that research and come forward with a written policy. So I think maybe this is premature, I'm not opposed to it in philosophy, especially if it doesn't burden, if there's no additional cost to our, our labor, but, I don't know. Isn't that what you just said, that we should, that this is premature?
I think it would be appropriate for the City Council to, if they're going to have, if you're going to have a policy, to have it in writing. So it's clear, and hopefully, not subject to interpretation how we. From past policy, and we had a conversation since I've been here, two or three years ago, we've allowed credits for, also, and I cited several examples where we have people come in, and different reasons and different. I understand that the basis for the, one of the next two items is that, now that we're on to the ground, and that's why we should, for those two requests, in this case, it's just prorating it, but it's just contrary to what we've always done for over 20.
I guess.
If you want to change policy, we should, we should codify that, so it spells out what we allow or don't allow in the ordinance, or if, if not contrary to the ordinance, and I did read the ordinance, I didn't see anything that allowed us to make exceptions or to prorate, I didn't see anything that precluded it either, I would probably defer and have the city attorney render an opinion about that. I think there might be some gray area where the council could adopt a separate policy, but it should be something in writing, and what Counselor Drowba said, he thought it was appropriate, and the facts in this case, to, to do it now for this particular case, and I think, I think that we move forward with a policy to allow that going forward for everybody.
If I understand what you're saying is that, that the ordinance, as you have read it, does not prohibit an action by the council to do this, it also doesn't say anything that allows the council to do it.
And I think what he's saying as well is that this is not a good way to make decisions.
Well, I think it went to committee, and it's now here before the council, I think that the, you know, I think I would agree with the City Administrator, that maybe the city attorney ought to look at the ordinance, review it, and decide whether or not we need to revise the ordinance or to have a written policy, so.
I've not, Mr. Mayor, I've not reviewed the, prior to the meeting here today.
Well, I think, in your opinion, the City Administrator, if there's nothing that would prohibit the council, I think the action is properly before the council.
I'm just making the point that it's, it's setting a precedent that hasn't been performed in the past.
Well stated.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor, Counselor Drowba first.
Hold on, I'm just shaking my head, I'm, here's my thought on a lot of things that come before this City Council. We like to think about what precedent has been set, or what, what's been done in the past, but the reality is, is that's what we are, we're a City Council of Decision-makers, and sometimes things have different, different facts, or, and we have to make decisions based off of what happens. There's some things on here that passed committee, and I don't know how I feel about that, and I want to have the discussion, but nothing is precedent. I mean, we, we make decisions, that's what a City Council does. So I don't think anything goes based off of what happened 20 years ago or 30 years ago. If, if the reasoning behind anything on this agenda is that we need to take action or make a decision, that's what we need to do. That, that's how I feel, and I, I don't think any one decision or three, four, 10 decisions that we make as a City Council is officially precedent to move forward for, for future.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Jacksaw.
I, I think this isn't an earth-shattering decision, any which way we go on this, I am going to vote no, however, because I think that process is important when you're making decisions about individual constituents that have ramifications on how you might deal with another constituent down the road. So.
I'm just making the point that it's setting a precedent that hasn't been performed in the past.
Well stated.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Drogba first.
Hold on, I'm just shaking my head. Here's my thought on a lot of things that come before this city council. We like to think about what precedent has been set or what's been done in the past, but the reality is, is that's what we are, we're a city council of decision makers. And sometimes things have different facts or, and we have to make decisions based off of what happens. There's some things on here that passed committee and I don't know how I feel about that and I want to have the discussion, but nothing is precedent. I mean, we make decisions, that's what a city council does. So I don't think anything goes based off of what happened 20 years ago or 30 years ago. If the reasoning behind anything on this agenda is that we need to take action or make a decision, that's what we need to do. That's how I feel and I don't think any one decision or three, four, 10 decisions that we make as a city council is officially precedent to move forward for future.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Jackson.
I think this isn't an earth-shattering decision any which way we go on this. I am going to vote no however, because I think that process is important when you're making decisions about individual constituents that have ramifications on how you might deal with another constituent down the road. So I'm just thinking process here, you're saying that, you know, it's not a perfect world, I appreciate that too, so it's part of the joy of being on the city council, right?
Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
And I'll vote yes, there being three for the motion and two opposed, the motion is carries and the prorating of the water and sewer charges for the miles is adopted. Item number 3B is Perry Mettler experienced a frozen water line at 1801 Third Avenue and the committee is recommending that the sewer charge, since no water entered the sanitary sewer, that the sewer charge be eliminated and they would pay for the cost of the water that came out the frozen line when it broke, but we're asking, Mr. Mettler was asking if we would, since no water entered the sewer and there's no charge to the city from the North Koochiching, that we would reduce the sewer charge by $500 and the committee recommends that.
Your pleasure with that item?
I would move...
Motion by Counselor Briggs. You're second to the motion. I would second the motion as a member of the council. Discussion.
Well, you know, I've been here long enough and I don't want to see the accounting department turned into a negotiating center for water bills that take half of the work week. And we've had long, I mean, we've had week-long discussions about watering lawns and et cetera. Again, I'm afraid that we make this decision and we're going to be inundated. What are we going to do when somebody comes to us and says, "Well, I watered my garden and that didn't go down the sewer"?
They made a decision to water their garden. This, in this case, we're talking about someone who had a water line break and they will be paying a very large or significant cost in the water that was lost.
I know and it's a heartbreaker and I think that a better approach is to build in through the water rate structure, a relief fund and allow people to access that when they have a water break a certain amount of time. Other cities take that approach so that, I mean, we've had hardship cases before us before that are absolutely heartbreaking. And because the water leaked, occurred in the home, we, they ended up paying the whole fee, both the sewer and the water. And now, you know, I mean, I don't like to be in the situation where we're trying to make a decision in the accounting office that has all these different permutations and ramifications that we as counselors cannot foresee in any one particular instance that we're looking at. Anyway, so I'm real uncomfortable with this, I understand the argument and I, it's a tough decision to make.
I disagree. I think it's a very easy decision to make because we're counselors and for me, I'm going to take each case and base it on the merit of what happened. And in a situation here where somebody has a frozen water line and there's no cost to the city for the sewer charge, I don't have a problem with taking the sewer charge off. It's just, when I had a swimming pool, you know, I'd like to, you know, be able to fill my pool up and not have to pay a sewer charge because that water's not going to the sewer either. And it was something that came before the council before when I, you know, a long time ago and they agreed and they took that charge off. And I think it's a case-by-case situation as counselors, that's what we're here for, to make that decision based on the merit of what happened.
You're gonna be making a lot of these decisions then.
Well, I don't think there's that many people that have frozen water lines.
There is, they don't ask.
Go ahead, Counselor Pearson.
There's people out there that do have that, but they don't come and ask.
There are, honestly, I'll say that I contact quite a few people.
Can I ask, Ms. Drogba, how much of the water that, off this break in the winter makes it into the sewer? Is there a significant amount, is there very little, is there a lot?
Well, it's been freezing the ground.
What happens when somebody leaves their spigot on, on their house and they forget to either turn it off all the way or it's on? Do we give them a break too? Because I know we've had that also.
That's a different situation and you take by the merit. I'm going by that, we're getting a recommendation from Public Works that I'm assuming that they've already asked all those questions and those kind of things. So if they're bringing a recommendation to me, and I read what I read, I'm okay with that. It already went to committee. If the committee decides it wasn't, you know, worth doing it, they would have brought a recommendation not to pay it.
I've been on committees and brought recommendations here and have not had them approved.
I will say...
You have that authority, yes, you have that right.
I will say this on this particular charge, we estimated how much the sewer bill was inflated over the course of the month. His nor, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but let's say his normal sewer bill for the property is $200. It ended up going up to $700. So we based the average off of that and that's how we came up with the $500 difference from the sewer, sewer bill on this particular charge. So that was the recommendation. I have spoke with administration on it after the, after the meeting, after we had made the recommendation. My mind hasn't necessarily been swayed, however, the issues that Counselor Jacksaw is bringing up have, you know, flown, just been absorbed because there are many, many cases and as Emma Rudd had said, there are a lot of people that don't come to the city. So how do we, how do we do that? Is everyone going to come to the city? How many of these do we have a month that...
I just fear we're going to open up the floodgates and we're going to be sitting here on every council meeting in the winter months anyway debating this. I think honestly that because we're good people and we care about our constituents, so this is a hard question for us, all of us. I think a better approach to me would be to add a penny or something to the water rate, do something so that you could set up a contingency fund, that you put rules around it. But when you have a hardship case and people, it happens, right, that they could access that and everybody's jointly paid, sort of like a common insurance. We all have insurance, right? House insurance, health insurance. It's just a little insurance fee on there that allows people to access it when they have a disaster, right? And that then would eliminate this agony that we've gone through a number of times. But, but I'm going to vote no on this because I'm going to protect future councils.
Well, I know that, and you've brought other high water and sewer charges to the council. In that case, they had a toilet that was leaking for the whole month and it, and I know that the water was purchased and the water went down the sewer. I know several months ago, one of my neighbors, in fact, I went in the house and the water was, the water line had broken. All the water went down the sewer that they had there, they came in and paid the full cost because they had, the water was, they had purchased and the sewer, and we pay the North Koochiching by the number of gallons of sewage that they treat out there. And so in this case, if it all went on the ground and didn't enter the sanitary sewer, the committee is recommending that we, that we not charge them the sewer charge, give them that kind of relief. So that's what the two cases that are coming up here. So we have a motion, is there further discussion?
Question?
Aye.
No.
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 I'll vote yes, there being three opposed to the motion, two for, the motion fails and the sewer charge will not be reduced.
Item number C, 3C is similar to 3B in that Ms. Kim Creed at 1312 Seventh Avenue, water line, frozen water line, and again, the water did not enter the sanitary sewer. The committee was recommending that the sewer charge be reduced by $1,183.58. Your pleasure with that.
Move.
Motion by Counselor Briggs. You're second. As a member of the committee, I would second the motion. Discussion.
Same on this one? Frozen line outside? Freshen my memory, what was the total bill for...
The amount of water, as I recall, was like 93,000 gallons. I'd have to go get my committee file to remember the cost of the water.
Further questions or discussion?
I'll just say again, the reason why I can vote in favor of this is because of the committee recommendation and the fact that this happened to me before and it's, sometimes it's very difficult to know. The only way I found out is because a city worker just happened to notice that there was a lot of water in my yard that I didn't notice and checking and it can happen. And if it doesn't go to the sewer, I don't think it's fair to charge them the sewer.
Good, further discussion? Question?
Yes.
No.
No.
I'll vote yes, there being three opposed and two for, the motion fails and the sewer charge will not be reduced.
We'll go to 3D. The Public Works Committee is recommending that the Public Works Department expend the necessary funds from the permanent improvement fund for water main and doing horizontal, directional drilling in the alley of Third Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenue, Main Avenue between the blocks of 21st and 22nd, and on 22nd Avenue between First Avenue East to Second Avenue East, and on Highway 53 between 17th and 20th Street if it's necessary to replace or install new water line. Pleasure with the recommendation to expend necessary funds to do that horizontal, directional drilling.
Motion by Counselor Drogba.
Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion or the project.
One of these projects here, the alley in the north of Third Street between Fifth and Sixth Avenue is behind Randi's and Sears and the Public Works Department would like to get that drilling done and the new line in there before they take and replace the alley in 2019. In the other two cases, they would be looping the lines, connecting up with other lines that are already there and just getting the flow of water better through those lines. So, and in the case of Highway 53, we don't know the design exactly yet, maybe find out more on Thursday evening, but the plan right now would be to possibly lower the height of Highway 53 and that could require that we put a new water line in place so that we don't have the freezing. With that, further discussion?
Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried, five for and none against in the horizontal, directional drilling will move forward by the Public Works Department, thank you. And then item 3E is to approve the trade-in value loss of 8,500 due to the loss of the transmission on the trade-in of the backhoe. Motion by Counselor Drogba.
Second.
Second by Counselor Pearson. Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried and adjusted trade-in value is approved, thank you. Any other new business? Then the reports of the administrator, attorney and department head, city administrator.
Commissioner, I brought your attention to put it in the packet this week. The commission had met last Thursday evening at 5 o'clock to consider the request of Koochichin County and State of International Falls regarding a conditional use permit at the FTZ site and they ultimately decided to table action, give them more time to consider the facts and the testimony before them. And they had one of their members, they actually only have a four-member board right now and one of the members was not present, so they were going to reschedule. But I heard from somebody that was here earlier. I've got your attention. Also want to emphasize the public open house meeting that'll be held by MINDOT at the American on Thursday, April 5th and that'll be between 6:30 and 8:00. That meeting is to just discuss the proposed improvements to Highway 53 and questions that the public may have, if there's any concerns, MINDOT engineers will be there as well as their consulting engineers to respond to those questions, so I agree. We have an agreement with the local authorities. That's us are preparing the revised language for their review and it'll be on an upcoming city council agenda. I think it's self-explanatory and I could...
Questions to the council heads? Thank you. Questions for the city administrator on the monthly report?
Just a comment.
Please.
I did miss the last negotiation session because I was out of town, but I'd like to congratulate everybody involved for arriving... to congratulate everybody involved for arriving at meeting of minds. Thank you.
It was a marathon.
[laughing].
Thank you, City Administrator. No further questions. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing special to report.
Thank you. Chief Mastin.
Mr. Mayor. For the police department, in March for training, all of our officers completed with assistance of the- Also all recertified in their TASER certification. Management system training, which we're looking for a go-live date, the next, day of next Monday, so hopefully that goes. We had an additional presentation that officers were requested to participate in in the fourth quarter of the past month. As far as our activity, our calls for service, we had 274 calls for service, traffic stops, 27 medical assists, nine arrests, and we generated 105 ICRs, which was a total of 549. So, 2017, nothing out of the ordinary to report.
Thank you. I guess I would have one question and maybe it's an unfair question, but on the opioid community, do you have an opinion as to whether we have a significant or less than significant problem?
I would say that we have, we've got a considerable problem with most other drugs in our community. Law enforcement is facing the cross our nation, the opioid epidemic is number two.
And the awareness conference, does that, the officers that attended that find it useful?
They didn't attend the entire conference, they were presenters.
Oh, they were presenters, thank you.
They went over and presented to a large group of service providers, law enforcement officers over there and whatnot. They presented on the trends that we're seeing. There's a lot of information exchanged with the issues and trends that they're seeing over there, so.
Good. Thank you.
Do we have the opioid kits the officers are using during this training, to use them and all of that?
Don't carry the Narcan, I'm assuming you're speaking of Narcan. Our officers, the city officers do not carry Narcan. I believe in the rigs. We don't carry them.
I got educated pretty good last week on that. There's a lot to that so far as safety for our officers and the paramedics that are proper training because that and all that could be involved in all those kind of things. Huge, you know, hazard to those-
That's a big concern. There's a lot of departments out there. A lot of their officers field test as they come across. As of all the problems and concerns of some of the-
Other questions for Chief Mastin? Thank you, great to report and thank you for your comments there. And I think we have the Chief Manassas' report as part of the handoff for the fire department and ambulance for the month. Questions there? Thank you. We'll go to the reports of mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. Please, Councilor Drogba.
Today we had a very, very full agenda for our budget and finance meeting. We did have a conversation with the Rotary Organization and the Rainier City Council was essentially here. And we had a good, good starting conversation on City Beach and where we'll be placing the spray park. Lots of questions still to be answered. With that being said, we are gonna have a committee with Public Works and them set up very soon and to hammer out the details of the project. There are a lot of questions that we still have, so it is moving forward. That was the, the one piece of the, for public consumption. We also had our Public Works brought in a, I'm sorry, I can't think of the firm.
WSN.
WSN, thank you. WSN came in and gave us a rundown of our sewers, storm sewers and water for future build-out of what, what our needs are in the community. And we will be having another budget and finance meeting on May 7th. I would just ask if we, HR committee, if we have a meeting date planned and also land use and legislation to discuss the water rates and the billing cycle.
HR meeting?
Yeah, is there not an HR meeting coming up?
There is an HR meeting tomorrow. It's Wednesday. Wednesday at 6:00 PM here. Is that what you want?
Yep, that's what I was curious.
Yeah. Can I make a comment on your comment?
Please.
I found the WSN discussion most illuminating. I mean, we spent a lot of time talking about the city's INI issue and that is influence infiltration into the sanitary sewer which then, which then drives up our cost at the North Kooch area sanitary sewer district. So if we resolve this problem, maybe even resulting in some modicum of rate relief break to our constituents. But I, I learned some things and I want to congratulate our Counselor Drogba, who was the chair of that committee, for arranging him to be there and, or whoever did. But I thought it was very, I learned a lot today. And I'm an old dog, so it takes a lot to teach me. It was very illuminating on our issues that we have. Thank you.
Further under council committees, boards and commissions?
Oh, I forgot one, one thing. I also attended the legislative conference for the League of Minnesota Cities a couple weeks back, maybe it was only a week ago, time flies. I did bring back the fact sheets, I dropped it off for everybody on the council. The big, the big issue right now for cities at the state level is the, I'll just use the example that they used for us. Uber and, Uber and Lyft and let's say AT&amp;T, they're trying to stream out into larger areas and how they can utilize their services. And what they're asking the state legislature right now is to come up with a one-size-fits-all box for how their services are used. For example, if you pick up somebody in, in Minneapolis and then they get, they get drove to St. Paul, what are the, what are the legal restraints for passing different municipalities? Same thing with AT&amp;T. If they're putting something on a pole here, is it gonna be the same rules and restrictions that they put it on a pole somewhere else? And what the League of Minnesota Cities' concern is, is the city should have the right to make their own laws for, for these larger entities. So that, that's the big push right now at the state legislature for cities, but they have a handful of things that are on the radar and I did drop off information for all of you.
Question with these, where they hire, what are they doing? They're contracting to people to take their personal cars and drive people around, isn't that the model?
Yep.
Okay. But you have professional conveyors of people that go through a licensing and training process and they are licensed by the state, I do believe? Are they not?
Talking about Cabs or?
Yeah. To have a cab license, is that a license issued by the city or the state?
City.
City, okay. Forget it then. I was thinking, you have some, you, you, if it was a state mandate and licensing over quality of services, you'd have some sort of homogeneity between the units of government that would totally leave out people that are working for Uber and those kinds of places. There is an issue there anyway of licensing that the cities are missing, right? I mean, you, we're gonna have a lawsuit someday on this. Something's gonna happen where you have, because it's, it's the Wild West, right? You've just got anybody driving people around, you know? Don't you think? Am I right?
Well, there are already lawsuits.
Oh, there are, okay. Yeah, so I mean, from the standpoint of city government, our local city, we're not gonna be immune from this.
Further under council committees, boards and commissions, and thank you for attending that legislative conference and bringing back that information. Found very helpful in reading it. You have the mayor's report for Monday, April 2nd. I would just bring your attention to two items. One, I'd like to thank our city administrator for his leadership and good work on the negotiations with all of the unions. Really did a outstanding job again and thank you for that. Secondly, on the Koochiching Housing Collaborative, that is moving forward with the proposals, request for proposals from three different firms. Again, City Administrator Anderson and KITA Director Paul Neben have been working on that request for proposals and hopefully will have those proposals by the end of April and a contract underway for a housing study in Koochiching County by, by June. So that would be very, very helpful to us also. With that, nothing further to come there. I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that wants to bring something to the attention of the council? Not, would just bring to your attention the National Park Service and Voyagers National Park Association hosting the state of park events for the public. And the city administrator already pointed out on Thursday night is the Highway 53 Memorial Drive to Third Street, the public meeting. And then tomorrow night at Rainier is the Rainy Lake CN Rail Overpass meeting and how that will be conducted over the next two years and will certainly have an impact on folks going to the lake. We could see some, some, I think some long lines of people because it's gonna be a one-lane road and, and so that's going to, certainly gonna have an impact on our community and tourists.
Summer, you think we're gonna have summer?
Oh, yes, it'll come. With that, the next regular city council meeting is Monday, April 16th at 4:30. There's nothing further to come before the city council. Will stand adjourned.